All right, everyone. We are about to convene Monday nights, May 23rd, 2022 Dublin City Council meeting to order. I would like to ask Lieutenant Noble to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and his fellow veterans.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have a special presentation concerning Memorial Day, and Lieutenant Noble, would you please come to the podium and fill us in on the activities coming up?
Good evening. We're excited because we're back. Now, we've done Memorial Day the last two years. It isn't the same without attendees. Sorry about that. Our speaker this year is this young lady right over here, Meg Kelvington. We're really looking forward to hearing what she has to say. This year, we're doing it a little bit differently in that we're starting at the Link Bridge. We will do the wreath ceremony for those who didn't return off the Link Bridge, then march up to the cemetery, do the ceremony in the cemetery, and then afterwards, thank you. You're providing us lunch, which is always good. But we'll have a good turnout. The Dublin Kaufman Band is supporting us this year. They're always very good. So I hope that you all will join us. We would certainly appreciate it. Starts at 11 o'clock, Monday, Memorial Day, and we're usually through by 11:45 and lunch at noon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colonel, do you want to say something about our speaker? You're a West Point graduate, is that correct?
Sure.
Oh, all right. Hello, my name is Meg Kelvington. Yes, I grew up in a military family. Both of my parents are West Point grads, and I followed suit, so did my little sister. I did eight years in the Army, active duty, first as a Black Hawk pilot and then RC-12. It's an intel airplane. My husband is still active duty military. He is the head of the Ohio State Army ROTC. I have gotten into fitness coaching and do life coaching as well now, and just love getting plugged into the local community here with the American Legion and being with other veterans. And just thank you so much to the city of Dublin for recognizing this special day and then giving me the opportunity to speak. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. That's wonderful. So we're so looking forward to hearing from you on Memorial Day, and thank you for the service that you've all given. And I know the Memorial Day celebration is something that this community does come out for. It's usually a wonderful procession. Lunch is great. It's a very solemn moment at the cemetery, and I think I encourage the public who's watching to please come and support the Memorial Day services here in the city. So thank you.
Hey, Mayor, could I suggest one thing?
Sure.
Bonnie, would you like to take the opportunity to just talk about your recent signing day of our high school students and what's going on tomorrow? Bonnie Gamarri is retired Air National Guard and veteran and serves on our Veteran Advisory Committee, and she's done a lot of great stuff with through Scioto High School as a counselor teacher there. So I'll let her tell the story.
I'm Bonnie Gamarri, and I'm a Family Consumer Science teacher at Dublin Scioto High School. So a few years ago, we started the Military Commitment Day, and so this was our fifth year during the Military Commitment. So it was back live this past year over at Emerald Campus. We had at least 24 commitments this year. There were plenty of academy and ROTC and active duty and guard, so all different types of component and reserves, different components that committed on that in the military in some way. So we also did a military options because we're trying to educate people on all the different types of military ways to serve. And tomorrow night, we did a lot of research. Our school got designated the Purple Star School from the Ohio Department of Education. And in that, that means that we are supporting military-connected students and their families. So we're providing whatever type of support that might be, honoring and supporting. We have a website, you know, a webpage on our school webpage, and then we have roundtables with the students and just we've identified them through surveys and items like that. But we also are trying to reach back to find all of our veterans that have graduated from Dublin Scioto. So that has been something that John Witt, one of the other teachers and myself, have really spent a lot of time trying to dig them up because what we found is that so many of our veterans are people that joined the military after they graduate from high school. So they aren't part of that military commitment. So now we're trying to find both ways. And so Scioto has taken the lead on it, and now that we have taken that lead, we're going to share that with the other schools as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for sharing that with us. It's great that the students hear that from the other schools, too, since Scioto has been the instigator of all of it. So that's great. Our next is our Dublin Arts Council programming update from Director David Guion. Welcome, David.
Hello, welcome to you. On behalf of the entire board and staff of Dublin Arts Council, thank you, Mayor Fox and the entire council for allowing me to provide you an update this evening. I'm Dublin Arts Council Executive Director David Guion. I'd like to begin with an update on our River Box program now in its 15th year. River Boxes are where geocaching meets public art. We just completed our new artist-designed GeoCoin launch event on April 9th. We hosted over 250 attendees, and we logged nearly 100 GeoCoin challenges completed to date. A quote from one of our geocachers, "On a snowy day in March, my friend and I came to Columbus to find the letterboxes on the trail. We were unable to complete them all that day, so we made plans to return today as it would allow us the bonus attempt of attending an event. We weren't expecting to see snow in April, and I blocked all thought of hills from my mind. We encountered both snow and hills and were found that the last four letterboxes on our way. There were so many people at the event, nice to see the great turnout. The indoor location was warm, dry, and full of art and activities. We saw some Geo friends and chatted for a while. The GeoCoin is beautiful, a fitting end to all the artistic letterboxes we found in Dublin. Thanks for organizing and hosting this wonderful event." Dublin Arts Council was awarded the Virtual Cash Listing as one of the top 1% of 450,000 geocachers in the United States. Our Virtual Cash provides a series of questions that lead this searcher to the Daily Choice Sculpture at Bri-Hi. DAC is meeting this week with Visit Dublin, Ohio to have GeoCoins placed in the Visitor Center to help promote for other visitors. Dublin Arts Council continues the Art and Wellness Initiative that began prior to the pandemic, exploring how the arts can nurture community and individual well-being. To date, we have conducted two artists-led nature walks. The remaining walk is Tuesday, June 14th, in Kiwanis Riverway Park with artist Jonah Jacobs from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. You will meet for an enlightening stroll with a focus on spotting natural objects along the way. Our continuing initiative, which includes our nature walks, brings us to the exploration of fractals, which are repeating patterns in nature that are shown to reduce stress. In some studies, stress levels have been reduced up to 60%. Sketches and materials have been collected from these walks that will be incorporated in next year's community exhibition about fractals. The exhibition includes professional artists with community participants to collaboratively produce work. Combining the art and science of fractals, the exhibition will have a particular focus on girls and women in STEAM, which is science, technology, engineering, art, and math. Potential STEAM collaborators include the Cooltech Girls, the IB Programs at Dublin's Emerald Campus, the College of Health Sciences at the OU Dublin Campus, Jazz Tech, Roto, and Cardinal Health. Dublin City Schools Public Art Challenge began in January 2022. The DAC staff worked with nearly 200 students from the Carr and Davis Middle Schools, as well as two classes from the Emerald Campus Interbaccalariate Art Programs. Dublin Arts Council challenged students from these three Dublin City Schools to create temporary public artwork inspired by Dublin Scioto Park. The two- and three-dimensional public artworks embrace nature, environmental awareness, local and indigenous history. To accompany the public art installation, DAC staff created a Sense of Place fieldbook. The fieldbook provides information about public art and activity prompts designed for all ages. These fieldbooks are available at art boxes throughout the community and can be downloaded from DAC's website. The unveiling of the artwork took place this past Friday, May 20th, in Scioto Park. Nearly 200 students, administrators, staff, volunteers, Dublin Arts Council Board, and an overwhelmingly supportive community gathered to celebrate these incredible works of art. Mayor Jane Fox, Superintendents of Schools, Dr. Marshausen, and the students and DAC guests gave remarks. I strongly encourage all of you on council to visit the lower level of Scioto Park by the end of August. The students' artwork is complex, whimsical, site-specific, and socially focused. Special recognition goes to Sarah Rothwell from Emerald Campus, Marlo Brown with Carr Middle School, and Eric Casiopo with Davis Middle School. Special thanks to the city staff, Michael Hyatt and Larry Nickel for assisting with the installation and the troubleshooting. We could not have completed this task without their help. I also encourage you to please stop by the Dublin Arts Council Gallery to experience the exhibition Penny Denning, The Collage of Art of Recycling, which is now on view through June 2nd. Denning composes collages from recycled images that have a previous life in old and new photographs, magazines, and printed materials that arrive at her doorstep. She fits cut images together in irrational and quirky ways, removing them from their original context to give them a new and unique frame of reference. Future exhibitions include the Art Quilt Alliance Threads of a Poem, which opens June 14th and runs through July 21st. This is a group exhibition of a 35-member Art Quilt Alliance, featuring non-traditional quilts embracing literal and abstract translations of poetry. This year's Sundays at Scioto Concert Series is an all-tribute series with four concerts starting August 14th and running through October 9th. The schedule includes the Eagles Tribute Band, Seven Bridges, the Disney classic Little Merman, the British Invasion, a '60s British rock band, and on October 9th, for the finale, The Wildflowers, which is a Tom Petty Tribute Band. Details on all of our Sundays at Scioto concerts can be found on our website at dublinarts.org. Sponsors to date for this include City of Dublin, thank you, the Ohio Arts Council, the National Endowment for the Arts, Cardinal Health, Columbus Financial Concepts, Crawford Hoing, Fifth Third Bank, Hidaka USA, Honda Marysville, and IGS Energy, plus our media partners WCVE and City Scene Media Group. Dublin Arts Council Board and Staff, thank you for your insight and support of one-time ARPA funding to help Dublin Arts Council survive and thrive. Ohio's economic recovery depends on our creative sector for revitalization and growth. As background, Ohio's creative industry continues to suffer from the highest unemployment rate among all sectors. According to the Ohio Labor Market Information, in December of 2021, Ohio's top-highest unemployment rate was in arts and entertainment at 16.36%, more than double that in leisure and hospitality. The following data in the next three slides is from DAC's 2021 Year in Review infographic, which you have in your packet and is also available at the end of this presentation. In 2021, Dublin Arts Council returned an estimated $1.65 million in economic impact to Dublin. This figure is calculated by the number of program participants multiplied by the average economic impact for both in-town and out-of-town cultural tourists and arts patrons. Due to the steady source of funding through the City of Hotel Motel Tax Fund, Dublin Arts Council is able to further leverage funds by grants from state and federal sources, businesses, foundations, and re-granting organizations, combined with corporate sponsorship and individual contributions to provide a combined value of two and a half times the investment of hotel motel tax dollars. Impact is often best illustrated by a single interaction. As you'll see on the screen, a River Box Journal entry, someone writes, "You are worth it," and the person replies, "Thank you, I needed to hear that." We saw these behaviors exhibited as our owned media reach via social media and email grew to more than 400,000 in 2021, and visits to our website nearly doubled in 2021 versus 2020. Dublin Arts Council continues our strategy of focusing on earned versus paid media with continued positive results in the first quarter. Shown on this slide is a two-page spread of the Ohio Arts Travel Guide. The important publication is actively distributed by the Ohio Department of Development and Tourism for a full year. DAC's first quarter 2022 reach includes a traditional media reach of 8.8 million, nearly 15,000 website pages on view, e-news open rate of 43.7%, the average industry standard e-news open rate is 17%, and we had a social media reach in the first quarter of 42,000. On behalf of the Dublin Arts Council Board and Staff, I'd like to restate our dedication to our mission and our vision. Our mission, Dublin Arts Council engages the community, cultivates creativity, and fosters lifelong learning through the arts. Our vision, a community of those who live, work, play, and learn in Dublin, in which the arts are embraced and nurtured, and through the arts, lives are enriched, diversity is celebrated, and the economy is enhanced. And finally, at last week's Governor's Awards for the Arts Ceremony with Ohio Arts Council, philanthropist Bert Seidel quoted his wife Alice by saying, "A community without the arts is like a library without books." So thank you, Dublin, for keeping our proverbial shelves lined. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I still have the hair going up on my arm after seeing Friday evening the student public art. Everybody who's listening needs to go to Scioto Park. That was the most amazing display of student creativity I have ever seen. I just hope the rain didn't hurt any of the art, but the students found a way to take Scioto Park and respect the indigenous people that live there, the waters that run there, the land that lives there. It is so heartfelt what they did, and I won't say that anyone is better than the other because they're all wonderful, but you will be moved by the lady by the water. I have to compliment you. The work that the Dublin Arts Council is doing right now in inclusiveness and engagement and outreach is enriching this city in so many ways, and the students there just felt like they were artists. It was just the most wonderful evening. It was just a wonderful evening. So I want to thank you and everybody who worked on that because I know that if you get a chance to go see it, you'll just be awestruck. You'll be awestruck. Yeah, it's wonderful.
Yeah, I think the lady by the water, two of the students are using it as their college entrance.
Yeah, I can see that. It's very...
It's pretty exciting.
It's very moving.
They took it really seriously, so.
Yeah, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Next on our agenda is citizens' comments, and this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. Do we have, Lindsay, anyone checking in to make a comment, or do we have any comments received online?
We do not, Mayor.
Thank you. Next is our consent agenda. Is there a request to remove this item from the consent agenda, the May 9th, 2022 regular meeting minutes? No? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Will you please call roll?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Kram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Second reading, Ordinance 1922.
Amending the Annual Appropriations Ordinance for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022.
Our staff report this evening is Matt Stifler.
Good evening, members of council. There are no changes from the first hearing on this ordinance.
Thank you. Do we have a public comment on this ordinance? All right. Council, do you have any questions or discussions for Matt on this? None? Call vote on the ordinance?
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Kram?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Amros Grooms?
Yes.
The introduction and first reading and public hearing on Ordinance 2022.
Declaring the improvement to certain parcels of real property in the city's Bridge Street District to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments, specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended, and authorizing compensation payments to the Dublin City School District and the Tolls Career and Technical Center.
I'll do so.
Thank you. Our staff report once again is Matt Stifler.
Thank you. Good evening, council. This Ordinance 20-22 removes part of the existing F Block TIF and reestablishes a new TIF on one of the parcels that is currently in that tax increment district. Previously, the three parcels were approved as the Block F TIF in Ordinance 36-19. This slide was shown when that ordinance was before council in 2019. It was a 41 TIF. It covered all the commercial property. The incentive district that underlays all of Bridge Park underlaid this TIF. Originally, it was planned that there would be a hotel and parking garage on Block F. Ultimately, part of the reason that we're here today is because that parking garage was deemed not necessary, and the time delay in making those changes is one of the reasons that that parcel that we're here to discuss tonight has not developed. It was estimated that there would be $10 million in valuation over the 30 years, and this is to provide funding for the community facilities, namely the parking garage, public market, and events center in Bridge Park. So what we're being asked today is the existing Spring Hill Suites Hotel is in the existing F Block TIF. There is no change proposed to that parcel or that TIF. We are asking for that. That parcel circled in red. The parcel in orange, as you can see, is currently undeveloped. That is the parcel that will become the Bailey, which is the senior living facility. This parcel is currently in the F Block TIF, and if council does not take action, it will remain in that TIF. But what we're trying to do today is to remove that TIF, reapply a new TIF. Basically, what that allows us to do is restart the 30-year clock on that parcel. So instead of starting in about year five, by the time they actually build the Bailey, we'll be able to start it in year one. By doing that, we will increase the overall amount of service payment revenue generated by this parcel in this new TIF by about $2.2 million over the next 30 years. The city is estimated to receive an additional $1.1 million of that as it flows through the waterfall. The graphic before you here shows the G Block bonds. This was approved by the NCA at their meeting in November, and these bonds were issued in January. Should council decide not to approve this TIF by July 27th of this year, $315,000 of the $21.3 million that was issued would become immediately refundable because it would not have the debt coverage necessary to support that issuance. So that would be redeemable at that time. And then the public improvements that are planned for these funds are G Block garage and the associated costs with those garages. So subtracting $315,000 from that would reduce the budget available for that garage. The recommendation is that this ordinance is consistent with how the other Dublin TIFs are administered. The increase in service payment revenue to the Bridge Park NCA and ultimately to the city of Dublin would be increased by taking this action. It allows for $315,000 of public infrastructure to be constructed, so staff are recommending approval at the second hearing on June 13th, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Matt. Do we have any public comment on this, Lindsay? All right, council, do you have any questions for Matt this evening? Kathy?
I had a quick, just a clarification. Could you go back to two slides back? Not, I'll start at the front. One more. So this one, I'm not sure that I understand. So the current TIF, the funds were issued in support of G Block. This changed, will the funds that eventually be issued, I'm assuming there'll be new debt financing, will that also support G Block? Or what actually is happening here with this arrangement? And I apologize if I didn't follow that.
Sure. So these, this bond issuance that was recently passed is for the G Block parking garage. To support that garage, there are revenue structures that include the F Block TIF as one of the service payment streams that support that. I guess this...
So would this new TIF, though, would some of that be pledged again to the G Block or no?
It would be. The current TIF is pledged to the G Block, and if we remove the TIF and reestablish a new TIF, it would follow the same pathway. It doesn't change the distribution of funds. It just makes five additional years roughly available for distribution.
So there's no other change in that structure? The same amount would be supportive of what happens in G Block, the same?
The amounts would change, so I don't want to use the word amount, but the flow of funds is identical, but the length of the TIF would increase the funds available by taking this action.
Thank you.
Sure.
Are there any other questions?
Matt, could we possibly, if there were some construction delay in the proposed development on there, would we want to perhaps delay it again if something were to change?
This, we will not have to delay it again because we will not file the exemption until it is actually constructed. The problem was, we weren't allowed to do that administratively, which is why we're here, but we always do that administratively. So if it ends up taking longer, we won't be here again because the finance department will be able to make that adjustment internally so that we maximize TIF revenue.
All right. Any other questions? We're good. All right. Thank you. The second reading on this and the next public hearing is scheduled for June 13th meeting. Ordinance 21-22.
Adopting the Proposed Tax Budget for Fiscal Year 2023.
I'll do so.
Matt, you have this to tell us about?
Good evening, council. This tax budget is an administrative requirement under Ohio Revised Code. It needs to be adopted and effective by July 20th, so we brought it before you today so that we could hopefully, with our recommendation, pass it on June 13th, making it effective July 13th. Again, this is an annual administrative requirement of the ORC, and this fulfills that requirement so that we will be in compliance.
Do we have any public comment, Lindsay? All right. Council, do we have any questions for Matt concerning this? All right. The second reading and public hearing on this is also scheduled for the June 13th meeting. Ordinance 22-22.
Amending the Annual Appropriations Ordinance for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022.
I'll do so.
Our staff report once again is Matt. Our staff report once again is Matt.
So at the March 17 retreat of council and at the May 9 meeting of city council, we discussed the expenditure of general fund balance revenues made available through the American Rescue Plan Act funding. This ordinance operationalizes those funds, appropriates those funds based on the discussion and direction that council had previously given to us. Staff recommends approval at the next meeting.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this? Counsel, do we have any questions for Matt? Any discussion? All right. Thank you. Second reading on this, public hearing is scheduled for the June 13 meeting. Ordinance 23-22.
Amendment to zoning code section 153999 to update the penalty code regarding demolition of historic structures.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Our staff report this evening is Sarah Holt and Thad Box.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. This is a request and review for the penalty code update. Last year, the Architectural Review Board identified an opportunity to address outdated penalties associated with Chapter 153 in our code specifically related to unauthorized demolitions and/or modifications of historic structures. You might recall that the current code has these penalties as minor misdemeanors with a fine of $100, which is not much of a deterrent, although each day may constitute a separate The proposed change was brought before the ARB in August of 2021 and was unanimously recommended for approval. In October of 2021, this request was brought to the Planning and Zoning Commission where there was a desire not to overburden historic properties and to encourage compliance. And then there was also a desire to discern between demolition and more minor offenses such as painting or other maintenance type of work. Thus, tonight's proposal is that demolition of historic structures and sites would be a fourth-degree misdemeanor with a $250 minimum fine and the potential for community-controlled sanctions. All other violations would remain as minor misdemeanors. And in this proposal before you is the removal of the $100 limit on the minor misdemeanor fine where the state law allows up to $150. We also are suggesting some minor grammatical revisions. And then at second reading, we are planning to introduce additional clarification about partial or total demolition to provide the desired clarification between that demolition and the property maintenance elements. By way of comparison, some nearby jurisdictions were evaluated for what they do relative to demolition of historic structures. In Upper Arlington, there is a $1,000 minimum with up to a $75,000 fine. Restoration may be required in Upper Arlington. In Columbus and specifically German Village, first-degree misdemeanors are at $1,000 a day and either and/or 180 days in jail. With historic properties, the potential additional civil fines of $25,000. In New Albany, we see that general zoning violations are at $200 a day with historic district potential up to $50,000. And then just by way of comparison, our own property maintenance code deals in the fourth-degree misdemeanor realm, and that includes items such as flaking paint, missing siding, and accessory structures in poor repair, for example. So we are requesting that the penalty code be updated, and again, staff will include that clarifying language for second reading. And I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Do we have any public comment, Lindsay? Counsel, questions for Sarah? Any? Any?
Could you take me through a sort of a scenario? Someone has painted their house a color that's not approved. They haven't gone through the approval process. What's the process you go through from there to the point at which you'd administer a penalty?
Well, the first step is to make contact with them and let them know that something's been done without ARB approval. At that point, we work with them over months, if necessary, to bring them into compliance. And this is all before a notice of violation is issued and we get into the realm that we're talking about tonight. This is a last resort approach here. We spend the majority of our time really working with people, educating people, and looking for, if not voluntary, compliance, at least an understanding and compliance in that realm.
This is probably a question for either Thad or Jennifer. The 153.999, Bullet C, there's a reference to a helicopter. Is that out of place or is that supposed to be there?
Good evening, council and Councilman Keeler. That is existing code, which this legislation does not propose to change. I really do not know the provenance of that provision, and so that's why we have not suggested a change tonight. If you're interested in us looking into that, we can certainly do so for the future.
So these penalties, this penalty section applies to a broad range of different penalties, but it's not limited to the A, B, C, and D. I'm sure there are other penalties that a resident would face in the city, speeding or, you know, driving under the influence. So is this specific section the most appropriate place to put the helicopter operations? I mean, it seems like everything else is relevant to what we're talking about here with respect to demolition, and maybe that just got stuck in there somehow.
Well, with Councilman Keeler, with respect to item C, it does refer to violation of the provisions of 153094, which is another provision in Chapter 153, which is our land use and zoning code. I could pull that up here, but I'm not intimately familiar with that particular provision. Other violations of the sort that you mentioned, such as speeding or OVI or any of our, you know, theft or any other criminal offenses, have their own separate penalty sections in the respective chapters of code that govern that conduct.
Any other questions?
I have a comment.
Any?
So under the new text that we're adding in B, my only suggestion is, right now, we call out demolition of sites or structures in the historic preservation world or whatever. We were also, structures would just be like our stone fences, whereas it would be buildings, structures, sites, and objects. An object might be a tombstone or a hitching post or, I don't know, I don't think we have a historic. I think there's a fire hydrant at one of the things. So that's what an object would be. So I would just recommend adding the words "building" and "object" to your list of things just to make sure we have them all covered. I also personally think $250 is still too low. I mean, it's not a deterrent. It's way more expensive to have to follow the code than to pay $250 to not follow it. So in my opinion, it's still too low.
Well, thank you, Councilwoman Cram. We can certainly address the additional language of the building and the object when this comes back for second reading. I will just note that in terms of the fine and the fourth-degree misdemeanor structure, the reason that staff and your legal department recommended that is because the fourth-degree misdemeanor gives the opportunity for the court to impose community-controlled sanctions that could be punishable either by imposition of fine or even in an extreme case, mind you, the imposition of days in jail. One of the, while there are other municipalities that have civil penalties up to $75,000, the question there is, that is a less tried and true method, at least in my view, and so that was why the recommendation was to go with the fourth-degree misdemeanor. But your point is certainly well-taken, that $250 is not necessarily a great deterrent, but that community control tool in our toolkit could be.
Any other discussion items?
So it says each day during which a violation or noncompliance occurs shall constitute a separate offense. So is it $250 per day or how does that work? So planning has worked with this resident for months to try to rectify the situation, and they get to a point at which there's an impasse, and the resident says, "I'm not going to do it." Is it per day or is it just a one-time?
It could be per day.
So $250 per day?
Right.
I thought we took out the fine for A, so we're not, he was referring to A. B doesn't mention a timeframe. It's A that mentions, those are the painting your house the wrong color. That's not $250 fine. The $250 fine is only for demolition, and we're actually striking the $100 fine for, like, painting your house wrong.
So somebody demolishes a spring house?
Mm-hmm. That's the two, so it could cost him $250.
Not per day?
It could be. Each separate violation could be.
It doesn't, B doesn't mention.
Per day until what?
Under B.
It would be per day that each complaint is written for until.
But if you demolish something, it's gone forever, so there's not a per-day charge. I mean, it's not like you can say, "In five days, the house has to reappear." I mean, it's tore down. You said, you can't.
I think one of the goals of the community control is we could order reconstruction. And so that could be your significant penalty. And so if you demolish something, we would have that, you know, the potential jail time to say, "Okay, you need to reconstruct this in such manner by this date," and we could hold those days out. So we have more of a remedy aside from fines. I think we were trying to search for something that would be more impactful than just simply a fine.
Chris, did you have? Oh, you're on. Okay. Kathy?
I just wanted to be sure. I understood, so if I'm a resident there, that the $250 is a minimum, but there isn't a lot of conversation about the maximum. There isn't, the things that we're just talking that we could do, would it make sense to put some language, just this conversation we had about maximum could include things such as, you know, recreation or reestablishment or whatever? I see that it gives latitude here, but how would that be decided, whether it's $250 or $25,000? Is that clearly, is that in the judge's hands? Is that in the?
And so that's why with code, we want to make sure it's very succinctly written and it's just got the penalty because if we, you know, as Sarah illustrated, we go to extreme lengths to work with people in court, mayor's court, environmental court, that's just last resort. And so those are very rare cases, and so we would want to have the ability to ask for whatever unique remedy we want if we think it needs to be reconstructed. And then, of course, we would have to do anything with, if we wanted to do anything that the defendant wasn't in agreement with, we would have to go to the magistrate and get that approval. So there, we leave it a little open so that we have that latitude with individual cases. But those are the rare instances.
You know, I like the fact that the commissions were trying to differentiate between demolition. And I also think demolition by neglect is another opportunity here because we do have demolition by neglect fairly frequently so that this is defined that. And I understand that it doesn't seem like very much from the code, but you have the opportunity if you take it farther. So I would say that I think it's also important that we communicate with our residents and our businesses in the historic district that these things are important, that it's not a penalty, it's a guideline, and to make sure that they understand clearly how they can maintain their homes and not cross lines. Because I think that has been somewhat of a confusing, confusing to some of the residents who don't know what like-for-like means, like when you go to replace a window. If you have, and a lot of these have old metal windows. So if you put in an aluminum window and replace an old aluminum, or an old, I guess they're old aluminum windows, is that like-for-like or does that go before the Architectural Review Board? There are a variety of small maintenance things that people do all the time, change a porch light, change the doorknobs. And I think this is the discussion that I'm asking as we go forward with our historic district conversation, just how we make sure that residents understand what they can and cannot do when it comes to maintenance, and that doesn't require them to come before the Architectural Review Board. I think that is what many of the residents in my ward are asking me to define. So I hope that we can do that as we go forward. And I'm assuming a communication went out about this to our historic district folks about this ordinance.
Yes, it did.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate it. Let's see, we will be having second reading on this scheduled for June 13 meeting. Thank you. Introduction on Resolution 23-22.
Authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Franklin County Commissioners for the administration of wireless 911 government assistance funds.
I'll introduce it.
Our staff report, and we welcome you, Jay Somerville, to the podium. Glad to have you back.
Good evening, members of council. It's so very good to see each and every one of you this evening. Tonight's resolution would authorize the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Franklin County Commissioners as a result of the distribution of 911 wireless government assistance funds, which are the funds that are collected at a rate of 25 cents per month on every wireless telephone in the state. These funds are meant to come back to the public safety answering points. The amount of money that comes back to us here at Dublin is $130,000 this year on a budget set by the 911 Planning Committee. So this intergovernmental agreement sets up the conduit to allow us to accept those funds, and those funds can be used to improve our 911 answering equipment, also allows us to supplement staffing costs. Staff is recommending your approval of this resolution, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jay. Lindsay, do we have any public comment on this? No. Do we have any questions for Jay this evening? No? I don't think so. We will vote on this resolution. Would you please call roll?
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Thank you, Jay. Appreciate it.
Mayor, I just, I just got to say, I just got to speak up and say, "Welcome back, Jay. It's great to have you back, and we've really missed you, and you're looking great, and it's just great to have you back." I don't know what else to say other than that, but welcome back.
Thanks, boss. Appreciate it.
Thanks so much, Jay. Resolution 24-22.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the 2022 sanitary sewer and stormwater maintenance programs.
I'll introduce it.
Our staff report is Paul Hammersmith.
Good evening, members of council. The 2022 sanitary sewer and stormwater maintenance programs provide for on-call task order maintenance and. programs provide for on-call task order maintenance and repairs to the sanitary sewer and stormwater management systems. In the past, these two programs have been bid separately. In 2021, the city did not receive any bids for the sanitary sewer maintenance program. In an effort to create more interest in these programs and increase the total contract value, these two programs have been combined for 2022. Staff conducted a competitive bid process for these programs, and on May 4 of this year, one bid was received and publicly opened by engineering staff. These programs are funded annually from the 2022-2026 Capital Improvements Program in the amount of $250,000 for the sanitary sewer maintenance and $100,000 for stormwater maintenance. The work for these programs will commence this year with the contract execution and will run through the end of the year as needed. As has been customary with these programs, the contract will be, will be a one-year contract with an optional renewal period for one additional year, which will be for 2023. Staff recommends council approval of this resolution, accepting as lowest and best the bid of Danberg Incorporated in the amount of $2,400 per unit hour. I will do my best to answer any questions you might have.
Any public comment on this one? Questions for Paul?
Paul, if not all units are respond, like if, if you have only partial participation of the entire unit, does that number get adjusted then, or is that by the crew?
Actually, how this program works is when we come up with a task, we actually have the contractor go out and look and then give us their preliminary estimate that we review, and their estimate is based on any one of these unit costs. So if they've assumed that they would need a labor in a skid steer operator and a skid steer loader, those are the items that they provide at the unit hour bid, and that is what basically derives their estimate. And then we approve that and then authorize the work.
So we pay roughly the same for a VAC truck as we would a skid steer loader?
At these prices, yes.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Actually, to pay back on that then, so you have them all listed out here by hour and price, so they'll pick and choose, so it's not always the 2,400. It's just.
It's whatever they would use for that.
Okay, so you just add the ones they're saying it will cost. We're just saying, this is the max not to exceed cost. So if, if the rental price of one of these, if, let's say, they have to go rent a backhoe because they don't have an extra one or something, it's not going to go above the price they've told us. Like, they're not going to come back and say, oh, rental prices have gone up 25%.
This is, this is their bid price.
This is their max, so if prices go up.
It's both the max and the minimum. This is what we will pay per hour for that.
So if they go, likewise, if they go down, then we're still paying more for that equipment.
Correct.
Got it.
So I have a question for you, Paul. In noticing, obviously, the price increase over the years, it's gone up quite a bit. And then, let's see, 2020, it was 1,830 per unit hour, and we only have one bid. What do you think the, what do you think the road is to try to get more bids? Is, are we going to be looking at, at just rising costs with one, one bidder as we go forward with the amount of construction going on in this central Ohio area? Because it does seem like we're at the mercy of, you know, just one bid.
Yeah, and that's been the struggle with these two programs, is really just trying to attract interest and have a contractor that's willing to do the work. So, and I think that is reflected in the cost and the number of bids. So I don't necessarily know what the future holds, but if it continues the way we're seeing it, yeah, I would expect we're going to see cost increases. In many cases, this is just work, work that we cannot necessarily do ourselves. And unfortunately, usually a short notice and an emergency situation that we need someone to react quickly, and it comes at a cost with this particular program.
All right, thank you. Would you like to call the roll, please?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Resolution 25-22.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the 2022 street maintenance program phase one.
Our staff report is Brian Gable.
Real quickly, yes, Brian will be presenting these two items, but some of you have met Brian. For those of you who have not, Brian is our deputy director of engineering for design and construction. He's been with us just over a year now. One of his primary responsibilities is implementation of our capital improvements program projects, of those assigned to engineering, and certainly street maintenance program is, is one of those critical programs that we administer. So with that, I'll pass it to Brian.
Welcome, Brian.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. As Paul mentioned, I'm Brian Gable. Staff conducted a competitive bid process for the street maintenance program fiscal year 2022, phase one. On May 4, 2022, four bids were received and publicly opened by engineering staff. This project is funded from the 2022 through 2026 Capital Improvements Program in the amount of 6.2 million for the annual street maintenance program. This is the first of two street maintenance program resolutions tonight. The bid total of both projects is at budget for the program. Construction of both street maintenance projects are expected to commence in June and July and be complete in October of this year. Staff, excuse me, staff recommends council approval of this resolution, accepting as lowest and best the bid of Strauser Paving Company, Inc., in the amount of $2,762,277.00 for this project. I will do my best to address any questions council might have about this resolution.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have any comments? Council, questions for Brian?
I have one question for you. Did you adjust prior to bid unit pricing estimates when you, did you, was this, were these estimate numbers based on previous year's costs, or were there, was there a revised cost for this year in its inflationary status?
That's an excellent question. Yes, so it was a kind of a aggregate of the two. So we've used previous year's estimates as well as the inflation factors that ODOT, Columbus, and surrounding cities have been seeing.
And what was your inflation percentage?
On average, it was between 8 and 10%, but that depends on the specific work type that you're having. So some things have been more affected more recently, you know, such as gas, petrol, et cetera. You know, other things are actually beginning to change. So it's a bit of a fluid process. ODOT is revising their estimates every two to three months. We're doing our best to kind of keep up as we bid these projects out.
Thanks. I think it's very interesting, because we've seen a number of these paving kind of work, and it, the inflationary component doesn't seem to be as present in some of the paving work as it does in other sectors. So I think that's just good for us to keep on the front of our mind, is because that's one of the, one of the very large expense that we do each year. So thanks for indulging.
Would you like to call the vote on this resolution, please?
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Resolution 26-22.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the 2022 street maintenance program phase two.
I'll introduce it.
Brian, you're back with our staff report.
Thank you. Good evening again, members of council. Staff conducted a competitive bid process for the street maintenance program fiscal year 2022, phase two. On April 20, 2022, four bids were received and publicly opened by engineering staff. This project is funded from the 2022 through 2026 Capital Improvements Program in the amount of 6.2 million for the annual street maintenance program. Staff recommends council approval of this resolution, accepting as lowest and best the bid of Kokosin Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $3,436,896.26 for this project. I will do my best to address any questions council might have about this resolution.
Public comment, Lindsay? Thank you. Any other questions or discussions about this?
So this is bid package number two? Okay.
It was bid prior to phase one.
Okay.
Yeah, it was prepared, yeah. We had two separate designers on the program, and this bid was prepared prior to the phase one bid. So phase two was actually bid prior to phase one.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment, because that's interesting that this was bid first, seeing the price differences and what came in. So I guess it's reassuring to know that the prices are going back down. For those that might be watching this online or haven't read this, it's, it's a significant difference between being 10, what, 10, 11% over as our lowest bid versus close to 20% under for our lowest bid. I just find that, it's a good trend, I guess. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? None? Would you please call roll, please?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Under other business, park entry signs. Our staff report is Matt Urmann.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. You'll recall at the March 21 council meeting, city council asked staff to consider updating existing park entry signs. To get a better sense of the existing inventory, staff collected several photos and provided a cost estimate for just the simple replacement of existing signs, and in your packet are a series of those pictures and numbers. I'll go through them very quickly just for public consumption. You'll notice that the, each of our park signs may or may not have a consistent standard throughout our entire park system. You'll notice that 25 of our signs are on two posts, wooden base painted white. We have four on a thick, single post painted green. We have two hanging from tall wooden posts, one on an unpainted wooden base, two on, two post wooden base painted green, two mounted on a stone base. So as you can see, we have a, we have quite the plethora of standards here. We also have a difference in our font sizes, and whether those numbers or letters are, or the letters are in capitalization form. We have the variances of whether the address is included on the sign of the location of the park. Certainly a general branding shift from one sign to the next as our branding standards might change or be altered. So do our sign designs from that point. So every time we make any alteration to our brand, it, it does take an effect on our overall sign inventory. If we were to replace all of the existing signs as they are today, there are 57 signs, it would cost about $931,000. If we were to include all of the pole-mounted signs for parks that aren't included in the inventory, some of our parks do not have a sign, that would be 80 signs at 1.241 million dollars. So you can see there's quite an expense associated with the replacement of these signs. These signs are sandblasted, routed, wooden signs, as you are familiar. So with that, we have quite the discussions, some research, and certainly some conversations to be had about this, and staff is recommending referral of this topic to the Community Development Committee. So before a motion is taken, I know Jane Fox, Mayor Fox, you sent me a few photos. I will bring those up for your, for your comments.
Right. I just brought them up in the matter of discussion, but I do want to make sure that we answer the four questions that you present to us this evening. So before I have you bring those up, why don't we take a look at your questions to make sure we get those asked, and then we can throw those pictures up during one of these questions. And I think the first one, well, first of all, I want to see if we have any public comment on this. All right. So the first one, if you can show us the Colton Back Park sign, Ted Colton Back Park sign, that was one of your questions. Does a committee support using the Ted Colton Back Park sign as a design for all the parks?
Yes. Mayor, these, these questions were, were ideas for taking forward to the development committee, knowing that there was going to be a lot of this type of discussion. Certainly happy to entertain those thoughts.
Okay. So you didn't want these answered tonight necessarily?
Not necessarily for consideration for council, but certainly for the Community Development Committee.
All right. So at least for, let's see, I guess there isn't any, the need that the public can see this. I will just have you then throw up those, place those images. And the only reason I did this is because as we go forward with the Community Development Committee and looking at what municipal signage could and may look like, I ran across this one. There are a variety of different signs types that at least I thought would be interesting to take a look at, and there's a couple more in there. This is what Upper Arlington does for their park signs. This was Westerville's. I think this was Franklin, Ohio. And I'm not sure where that one is. That was somewhere here in Ohio, Veterans Park. It's a Franklin County, but I'm not sure here.
And that was it.
I think that might be it, isn't it?
That was it.
Yeah. The first one, because it was Dublin, I thought that was interesting. It's not a very traditional-looking sign, but it's, but it's quite attractive. It's, it's quite different. So I at least wanted to throw these in the conversation to, to see if there was any, any other comments. And I will ask council if you have any questions for Matt.
Matt, did I understand you to say there are some parks that don't have signs? Is that correct, or no?
That's correct. Some of our smaller parks, neighborhood parks, they just don't simply have a sign.
Okay. And how many are there?
We have 64 parks.
Without signs?
No. Total number of parks, we have 64. We have 57 signs, but some of those parks have multiple signs on them.
Okay.
So there is a need for 23 additional signs if we were to sign all of our parks.
Okay. Thank you. I think it's sort of an important thing to do. I mean, people are probably wondering, you know, does the park belong to the community, the HOA, is the City of Dublin park? And then when they want to complain because the grass isn't cut, they'll know who to call.
They know who to call.
Thank you.
So Matt, you're, you're asking us to, to refer this to the Community Development Committee?
Yes.
So I'd like to make a motion to refer this to the Community Development Committee.
I'll second that.
I just wondered, do you want to answer questions before we do that, or?
Yeah. If you don't mind, if we can just hold on to it, we just make sure there's any questions we can ask before we.
I just had a quick question, if that's all right. Yeah, we can do it in an order. My question, Matt, is if, the math of these things are about $16,000 a sign, just the average, if you did that 930 by 57, whatever, that is a huge number. Why, why so, why such a large number? I'm just curious.
A variety of reasons. Some of the signs are larger than others, some, and most all of them have a, quite the foundation underneath of them in the ground. So they are, they are not just planted in the ground with concrete. There is a foundation on which they sit, and in, within they are inserted. So just the foundation alone is rather expensive. And then the sign itself is an expensive product because it's custom-made, and it is a sandblasted, routed, solid wood piece. So it is rather expensive.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just have one. When we send this to community development, and I know you had these four questions, and I'm sure they'll talk about this, are these signs something that could be made in-house in order to keep expenses down, or would they have to be made out inside the city?
We are very limited with our sign shop, if that's what you're referring to, on, on what we can and cannot produce. Metal signs is about the highest quality. That we do have traffic-grade signs. So if that were the case, they could be made internally.
All right. Thank you. So.
There's a motion on the floor. Just need a second.
Miss second. All right. Please call roll.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Cram?
Yes.
Ms. Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Fox?
Yes.
All right. Dana, you have some comments, staff comments?
I do have a couple of comments, members of council. Thank you. At your seats, you'll find binders for the memorial tournament. That gives you sort of a day-by-day guide of what's going on, as well as tickets and the like to be used. Also, we do owe you a. Also, we do owe you information regarding the, both the consul, Deputy Consul General, consul of Japan and Detroit that are going to be joining us. The consul general himself, as you know, will not be here. And also the ambassador of Ireland, and I did get confirmation, the consul, Deputy Consul General of Ireland out of Chicago will be accompanying him here during the tournament. So a little bit more information, I'll probably get something out to you by email tomorrow. I think Deidre finished up her research on that today, and I'll share that with you tomorrow and get your feedback on, as to what we might could do. Also, and if you have any questions about those binders or any of the events and so forth, don't hesitate to give me a call, we'll get that, get that clarified. We also did put in those, by the way, the attendees at the villa at each day, I think is something else that you wanted to see, so that, that's in there as well. And if there are any changes, you know, we'll try to keep you updated on that on a day-by-day basis. The other item that I wanted to bring up is I regret that we had to cancel council work session last week. We had a couple of good topics to cover and we need, we'll need to make those up. So we'll look at trying to get that in with another topic in late June, you have a work session. But also you have some capital budget work sessions and the like as well. We might weave a topic or two into those and just try to make up that time. So just communicate with you all on that. The other thing that, that I owe you is a, an update on council goals and what is the proposed strategy, if you will, to approach those goals as a result of adopting those officially here recently. So you'll see a memo coming out from, from me on that. And it's just, this is what we think we ought to do going forward and we can figure out a time, maybe during council meeting or whatever, to talk about that trajectory and the way you want to approach that. But we thought we'd toss that out there first and get your reactions to that. The last I have is I'm going to ask Jennifer Cluse, our new Director of Economic Development, if she would come forward, I'm going to ask her to introduce herself to you this evening, herself to you this evening. Jennifer?
I'm a little short, so let me adjust this. Mayor, members of council, my name is Jennifer Cluse and I am starting my fourth week as your new Economic Development Director. I come to you from southwest Ohio, primarily the greater Cincinnati area, where I've spent the last 25 years working in a variety of economic development capacities for both municipalities and most recently Clinton County, home of Wilmington Airport. I am looking forward to meeting with you individually and working with you as we move some of these projects that are included in your goals forward and just thrilled to be here, so thank you very much.
Thank you, we're really glad to have you. Welcome, welcome to the staff.
Well, we're thrilled to have Jennifer. She brings a great, broad scope of experience in some downtown work in some of the cities, like in Middletown and Hamilton where she's been before. Great work at Wilmington Airport, huge projects there. She brings a broad, very broad background with her. Also was Ohio Economic Development Association, OEDA, Person of the Year three years ago, was it, three? Huh? Yeah, okay. So recently, and we're very proud of that. So I think we had a great find and we're looking forward to the great things she's going to do. So thanks, Jennifer, for doing that. And that's, that's all I have this evening.
Thanks Dana, we're glad to have you back too. Glad to see you're back.
Thank you, we're upright, right Homer, Matt, a few of us.
And everyone, it seems like it just went around. Everybody, social distance, far apart. All right, so next are our council committee reports. Administrative Committee, Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes, thank you. I had just a couple of update items. The Administrative Committee met on the 3rd of May and we had three topics. One of those was also a follow-up from our retreat and that was the topic of moving council initiatives forward, both from initial presentation of an initiative and then moving it through. So as part of the follow-up work, our facilitator from the retreat, Jeff Strum, spent some time with the committee and we will work on putting a streamlined, I'll say that twice, streamlined process and format and bring that back to council at a workshop for your discussion. Second item was a discussion of the council liaison roles and responsibilities. If you recall, that was in committee, came to council, we had some discussion, it went back to committee. We did some additional work on that and we will bring that back to council also at a work session. So Dana said we're going to have some busy work sessions. The final topic for the day is we had an overview from the CPI group on the new Dublin website that's under construction, so we spent some time on the website in general and then provided quite a bit of feedback on specific areas, including the council areas of the website, boards and commissions, et cetera. So I know that link went out to all of council. If you've had an opportunity to look at that, great. If not, may take a few minutes because I know CPI is still working on feedback and so we had a very robust discussion, a lot of work underway there and we appreciate it. So we will meet again early next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Development Committee?
We've got up with all our assignments, but I guess we got a new one. And as soon as Megan or whoever might send us an email, we'll set up a time and meet on the signage. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Thanks. So we, we did meet and we talked through the 2022 Operating Budget Status Report, which looks pretty good, actually. The Bridge Park F Block Tiff came to you guys tonight, we talked about that as well, and the 2022 bond issuance update. So you can go and take a look at the materials that Matt presented. And then we do have an upcoming meeting, which we have to postpone just a little bit till hopefully later in June because one of our committee members is on vacation and we really like to have all three of us there.
Thank you. Public Services Committee, Councilman Kram.
Yeah, we met last Monday, so on the 16th, and our only topic was the waterway maintenance program. It actually turned out really well to have that as our only topic. We've actually had public participation. We had public, we had maybe six or seven people from the public come. And being that it was the only topic, we did take public comments, it was a little unusual, it was, it was nice. And I have to thank Paul Hamersmith and Aaron Stanford for doing a wonderful presentation. Our consultant from EMHNT explained everything very well to all the citizens. And actually, after the meeting, about three of those citizens contacted me and said, "Thank you." So they really appreciate it, it was very informative and very clear to them what was going on. So the recommendations of the, of our committee is going to be coming back here to council for, to move the waterway maintenance program forward.
Amy, can I ask you if, if, if public wants to hear more about that or there's minutes out, they'll be able to find some minutes about that particular, the waterway? If there's questions about waterway maintenance by the public, where would they find that, do you think?
Well, we will have the minutes from the meeting put together like we always do. And I'm sure the presentation that EMHNT put together could be made available as well.
Okay.
It was, it was a PowerPoint presentation.
Great, that would be nice because I think that's of real interest if we can get, if there was a presentation, it'd be nice for the public to be able to see it, so that'd be great. Okay, thank you. Our liaison report, Board of Education?
Yeah, we did not meet, so nothing.
All right. US 33 corridor, no? Mr. Keeler, Logan, Union County, Union Champagne County?
Nothing to report.
All right. Mr. Reiner, Dublin Arts Council?
You've heard an extensive review of that from Dave tonight, which was pretty comprehensive. And Colonel Noble called, covered the Veterans Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kram, Washington Township?
I actually plan on attending their meeting tomorrow, so I'll have an update next time.
Thank you. Councilman Amherst Grooms, Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission and Planning and Zoning.
Yeah, we did have our meeting week, week prior to last. You received a summary from Mr. Murdoch that was forwarded to you from that meeting. And then last week, kind of last minute, they reached out and put together a opportunity to meet with the folks from Amtrak. So on Thursday afternoon, we, William Murdoch, Thea Walsh, Joe Garrity and myself went to East Lansing, Michigan, and we met with some of the Amtrak executives there. As you probably recall, East Lansing is the capital, in the capital area there. So we met with the Lieutenant Governor of Michigan and a number of state legislators there. We discussed the funding of Amtrak in the state of Michigan and we took the Amtrak train from East Lansing to Chicago. And it was a very interesting ride. It took about three and a half hours. They called it a rolling meeting. So they're, they have a car that has a conference room and kind of a theater-style seating. So we had several meetings on the train on our way to Chicago. And it was quite compelling that, you know, the train reached speeds of 110 miles an hour. And it was really a fantastic experience. So you may have seen last week, the, the partnership and Morpsy released a joint statement in support of rail in the state of Ohio. The following day, the governor came out and he also made a statement of supporting, looking at rail for the state of Ohio. So when we got to Chicago, we met with the Amtrak folks there again. We had an opportunity for some question and answer of some insight as where do we go from here, what's the best path forward, what would it mean for the state of Ohio, what would it take? They really articulated that this is an opportunity that's not likely to present itself again in our lifetimes due to the, the federal money that is available. So I'm, I'm very hopeful that we will have, we will gain more and more traction with the state because if the state of Ohio doesn't actively go after some of these funds, it will be spent. It's the bipartisan infrastructure law, so that money will be spent. It will just be divided up with one less state if we don't participate. So it was at the invitation and at the expense of Morpsy, so we, I just wanted to be clear with that. And hopefully we will have more information to go. I think we will be planning another trip with the partnership that will likely go to Buffalo City, New York, which is one of the first train stations that was funded through private dollars. So see what that might look like. So I'll, I'll be bringing back as many reports as I can from that. It was, it really a phenomenal experience. It was so much information presented, so really hopeful that the state looks at that. And I, you know, I did have the opportunity to pass along the, the good work that we all have done in acquiring land along the, along the rail of the corridor and that they're definitely looking for willing participants. So I was able to, to pass along that work that had been done. Relative to the Planning and Zoning Commission, we did have our prep meeting on the 17th and they had a very robust conversation on the 17th. Unfortunately, they were a couple of members down, but they'll probably have, several of those cases were tabled or were in formal review, so they will probably revisit a couple of those subjects. And that's all I have, thank you.
All right. Council Roundtable, do you want to start, Christine?
Sure, I don't have anything, but if you do get a chance to travel to Buffalo, that is my hometown where I grew up, I highly recommend stopping at the Anchor Bar, home of the original Buffalo wing, they're still very good there, or Duff's, or my favorite pizza place growing up was Santora's. I've got lots of places, happy to come to you if you, if you go. That's excellent. And as a kid, I remember my grandmother always traveling by Amtrak and by rail to get from where she lived in New York to Buffalo, so it's pretty historic. That's all I have, thanks.
You know, it was great to see Michigan State having the opportunity to be to Chicago in, in three and a half hours. And I have some pictures that, and again, I think I found out on Tuesday night that we were going to leave on Thursday afternoon, so it happened very quickly. But I do have some pictures of the numbers of people that were traveling. It was, it was quite impressive. I do want to provide some follow-up on the Workforce Development Committee meeting, but that was the day after the last time we were together. It was a really productive meeting and I'm, I'm very excited about the possibility of significant meaningful work in the workforce development world. So Dr. Marshhausen, Lisa Pat McDaniel and myself have another kind of strategy meeting on Thursday after, Wednesday afternoon this week. But we're looking for, the Lieutenant Governor was very encouraging and he had good words and he indicated that there was going to be significant support from the state should we be able to assemble something that would be deemed helpful by them. So very exciting. Our, our next step is going to be meeting with kind of the directors for, for workforce. And, and by workforce development, this is not your typical plumbing, electrical, that sort of work. It's going to be artificial intelligence, robotics, it's going to be more of the STEM. So the directors of each of the STEM from the schools that were represented in, in Marysville, Hilliard, Worthington, Arlington, Columbus, Dublin and Tolles. So we'll have the directors of, of the STEM programs and we'll continue the conversation, so I'm excited about that. Also wanted to highlight the Rapid Five lunch from Morpsy. You, you have probably saw that Dr. Amy Acton was named the CEO of the Rapid Five. So at the, at the lunch with her, she had indicated her vision for Rapid Five and it is exciting and I think we'll probably see more of that to come. On the 13th, we had the dodgeball tournament and-
Thanks, Chris.
Well, thank you. I just have to highlight Emily and Kendall and I tell you what, if anyone ever needs something done, take Kendall with you because she was the last woman standing. So go ahead and stand, Kendall, because you were the only one standing as our team went down in glorious defeat. We, we did have the foresight to get our picture taken with the trophies before they were issued, knowing that that was our only opportunity to get close to them. So we did that and thank you both for saving a little bit of grace for the rest of us. Want to congratulate the Dublin Chamber, they had their, their dedication, their opening of their new space and it was really, the, the program following the open house was really wonderful. They had a, a long list of former presidents and people that came and spoke and it was, it was a fun walk down memory lane of all the things that have happened. Not the least of which is that it's the home of our first city, city hall, is the front portion of that building. So that was unique. I want to congratulate the, the 2022 Leadership Dublin class, they had their graduation on the 18th and that's all I have, thank you. Oh, one last thing. Our friends at the schools did name their new principal for Dublin Siotah in Tom Cochran, so welcome to him, to the community and congratulations to the schools for getting that position filled.
Go to the other end. Councilman Kram?
Yeah, I too want to thank Kendall and Emily. And to add to it, the impressiveness, there were three firefighters left and Kendall was the only one of us standing. And she got two of them out and it came down to her and one other, so, so she did make us look good, so thank you. Other than that, it's been a pretty quiet couple of weeks. I did get a chance to go on Sunday Grace Point Church over off Summit View, did a very nice appreciation day for those who serve their community. And actually, the officer in the back of the room, you were there too as well. And he and I were, you know, thanked by the congregation and they were just very welcoming and supportive and thankful to all of us who served the community. So I think that's about all I have for today.
I've got nothing tonight.
John?
Just want to remind you that we're going to have a lovely picnic and I want to thank the city for putting the funds up for the Veterans Picnic. It's always very, very nice, so. Nice time to mingle with some of our young people too, so hopefully see you all Monday.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, just a couple of things. Councilmember Kram, Mayor Fox and I had an opportunity to throw out one of the pitches at the Miracle League's opening day this past weekend. What a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful treasure that is for our community and it was, the kids were so, so excited. Sat next to a family whose son has participated for 10 years and it's the highlight and it was just wonderful. So thank you for that opportunity and congratulations to them. Had an opportunity to be part of a pilot, Christine Ardequio and her group are doing a pilot on Ride with a Buckeye where you, during Bike Month, spend some time with some physicians from the new OSU Center that's going to open here pretty soon. So you got to ask all your questions and then you got to go for bike riding, it was great fun. So I, I look forward to the feedback and was, thank you for the opportunity to join that. Chief, I wanted to say thank you for a, a wonderful and fitting tribute and memorial service this past week. It was, as always, very touching and as we go into Memorial-
And as we go into Memorial Weekend, to thank all who protect us every day, and particularly those who gave their, the ultimate sacrifice for us. So thank you for that absolute wonderful tribute. And then finally, thank you for staff and residents who joined. There was a meeting on the new interchange, the 33161 interchange, and the Highland Crowe Road improvements that are underway starting now for, well, realistically, for the next two and a half to three years. So going to be a huge project. We had a very good turnout. It was a, I think, our first both virtual and physical combo meeting, and it worked very well. So I thank the staff for your work on that. And for residents who weren't able to attend, that information has been put out, so you can look at the, listen to the meeting and look at the slides, and they will be ongoing because that project will, will continue. And Jennifer, welcome. Economic Development, looking forward to great things, and welcome to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I would encourage you all to read the memo on the Ohio Mayor's Alliance. It will give you a little update on all the House bills and some of the things that are going through the state legislature, which I will not elaborate, because we described quite a bit. At least on House Bill 563, the Airbnb, it does look like that might find its way to overturning some of our home rule regulations, so it would be worth looking at it. I had the privilege to spend a little time with three third-grade classes at Chapman Elementary, teaching them about local government. Boy, was that fun. And did they ask some hard questions. I thought you all asked hard questions, but not as much as the third graders. And that was a lot of fun. The bike rodeo the last Saturday was great to see the police out there handing out helmets, riding those scooters. And J.M. Rayburn and Andrew Kono are out there, and it was just, they do such a great job. When it comes to mobility, I think we're going to be the most connected, because we have got some really fun things coming. And I saw the most delightful older couple riding a couple of e-bikes the other day, and I should say older, I could put myself in that. But they were pedaling right up that Emerald Parkway hill without any trouble at all, and just giggling all the way up the thing. So it's going to be great to see mobility really take off around here. I honestly thought you won the dodgeball tournament with the picture you sent, holding the trophy. They fooled me. I thought you really could do it, but it looked like you almost did do it. And then once again, the Police Memorial. What a wonderful afternoon to spend, thinking about the great service and the sacrifices that our peace officers have given to our communities and the communities across the country. So please extend our love to them and tell them that we really enjoyed that afternoon and time to be with them. And as for that, I think we have nothing else in this meeting, is adjourned.